Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting of Tuesday, June the 6th, 2017. Please be advised that we will be audio and video recording this particular meeting. I would like to ask trustee Christina to lead us with prayer. Thank you, Christina.
Good evening, everyone. Please join me in the sign of our faith. In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Dear God, please look upon us in these moments of grief and pain. We believe that your mercy and steadfast love endures forever. We pray for all those around the world who are victims of terror attacks. Have mercy on their souls and may your love and light shine upon them. Grant us wisdom and courage to help all those around us. We pray that love and peace may truly reign in the hearts of all. We ask this through our Lord, Jesus Christ, amen. In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Let us please take a moment of silence for all those who have been affected by violent acts around the world. Thank you. A reading from Matthew, chapter 25, verses 31 to 40. "When the Son of Man comes in his glory, and all the angels with him, he will sit on the glorious throne. All the nations will be gathered before him, and he will separate the people one from another as a shepherd separates his sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right and the goats on his left. Then the king will say to those on his right, 'Come, you are blessed by my Father; take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world; for I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you invited me in; I needed clothes, and you clothed me; I was sick, and you looked after me; I was in prison, and you came to visit me.'" The righteous will answer him, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did you see you a stranger and invite you in, or needing clothes to clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go visit you?" The king will reply, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Please join me in saying this prayer. Comfort me with your love, O God; wrap me in your strong embrace; shelter me from the storm, O Lord; envelop me in your tender care. By day I pour out my heartbreak to you; by night I give you my racing thoughts. In you I take refuge; in you I will not be afraid; for you hold me strong, you hold me safe. Calm my fearful heart, O God; still my anxious mind, O Lord; for all of my life is found in you; all of my being is given to you; all of my hope begins in you, amen. In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen."
Thank you, Christina. We'll now have the national anthem and the oath of citizenship. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you. I would ask vice chair Trice to read the motions adopted in camera, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were no motions adopted in camera. Human Resources Activity Report, retirements are Melita Akowalina, Mae Brockbank, Christina Daly, Rose Ian Tornell, Kevin O'Connor, and Mary Frances Tuffner, retiring effective June 30th, 2017. Department Heads, Michael Jenny, Charles Lo Presto- Presti, and Patricia Urinich, appointed as department heads effective September 1st, 2017, for a period of up to four years. Acting Department Heads, Natalie Giorgio, Christopher Haley, John Kosher, Emily Leota, and Bruce Mazer, appointed as acting department heads effective September 1st, 2017, for a period of up to one year. And a curriculum consultant generalist, Jacqueline Mickel, appointed as curriculum consultant generalist effective September 1st, 2017, for a period of up to three years, with the possibility of a one-year extension. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. We are down to the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Trustee Quinn.
Madam Chair, I'm wondering if we could have the support of the board to defer 9.3 as the main sponsor of that motion isn't here this evening, to the next meeting.
It is listed as a staff report for tonight. It is normal procedure for it to be a staff report tonight going to an action item at the next meeting.
But the opportunity for discussion is usually following the staff report and not having a motion leader here.
We can have discussion at both. But usually it gives trustees time to think between now and read the material through. Otherwise, everything is coming at the same meeting. So if you want to...
I trust all the trustees would have read the material prior to this meeting.
Well, some of it's going to be presented, I believe, tonight. But I don't have a problem with it personally, but that is the procedure, that we have the staff report and the action item. I have spoken to that particular trustee many times today through email, and my understanding, she did not indicate any request for the staff report to be deferred. I think she'd like the action item to be deferred, but not the staff report. No, the action item would be for next time. Trustee Maron.
Two notices of motion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the first is a notice and public consultation on changes to employee compensation.
Okay.
And the second notice is robotics team funding.
Employee compensation, did you say?
Yes, correct. A notice and public consultation on changes to employee compensation.
Thank you. So that would be item 10-7 and item 10-8. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to bring a notice of motion as well, please.
Yes, your 10.9.
Okay, thank you. And that would be a motion to pass the 2017-2018 budget without the new initiatives.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was 10.9. So approval of the agenda, can I have a mover, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor? opposed? No? Okay, thank you very much. declarations of conflict of interest? None. Presentations, 4.1, Promotional Product Professionals of Canada Image Award. Superintendent Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Purposes to share with trustees, maybe a good news story about how the board's being recognized for some of the work we're doing around promoting a positive mental health throughout the community. I put in front of you some squeeze toys. The idea of being anxiety kind of, you can use them to be, help to regulate, and students use them to help regulate anxiety. We decided to use these as part of our promotion. You've heard us talk about our mental health strategy, Talk, Learn, Support. A part of making sure that we promote our strategies, getting it out in the schools very simplistically, Talk, Learn, Support are really the pillars of our mental health strategy. So part of what we decided to do is when we created these promotional materials to move ahead the idea of Talk, Learn, Support, we were very intentional about doing so. The elephant is about decreasing stigma. So it's all really about the elephant in the room. So the idea is the elephant is reducing, talking about the elephant in the room, and making sure that we're comfortable about mental health. Stars is the recognition of the uniqueness of every individual, and that everyone is unique yet from God. And our Talk, Learn, Support puzzle is how each element of our strategy fits together to create support for students in a timely manner, and to be able to de-stigmatize conversations around mental health. So this was our internal conversations here at the board, as how we were going to promote our mental health strategy. So at the Disable the Label Conference, Student Conference, we handed out these elephants to... Yep. These elephants to, you can play with that for the whole meeting if you'd like, trustee Danko. To talk about the elephant in the room, and get students talking about mental health. We gave out these stars to every student who participated in the, actually every participant who participated in the Mother's Day runs, the Team Unbreakable Run that happened a couple of weeks ago in Burlington. This was all in their packages, again promoting the idea of what we're talking about at Halton Catholic. And the puzzle pieces, we give to every staff member who completes some of the work that we're doing around anxiety modules, so helping supporting students with anxieties in our classrooms. We also have modules to support staff creating mentally healthy classrooms. It's the modules that we're doing as well, to really be informing staff and building staff capacity. And we give these to our staff when they've completed these modules. The purpose of the presentation was certainly to tell you that, but also to say that through this work, the group that we did the work with to create these promotional materials, unbeknownst to us, submitted our work as an exemplary example of promotion and branding of a worthy strategy. So they submitted our work because, as I outlined to you, it's intentional and thoughtful in its approach, and we won the award for branding from the Pre-Image Award from the Promotional Product Professionals of Canada. What I thought you'd be interested in is certainly the recognition. I like to highlight our staff doing good things for the right reasons in our buildings, but also that the work that we're doing here in Halton Catholic is being recognized through a wider audience. They know through the winning of such an award, there's conversations out in the wider community about the intentional work that we're doing at Halton Catholic to be promoting positive mental health. So I wanted to take the opportunity to certainly share those with you, and I know that I'll see you from now, every board meeting squeezing, and when you're getting stressed out, and you're right there in front of you. But I wanted to make sure that you had that and you knew about it. And I'm also going to take this opportunity while I have the microphone, because it's kind of late-breaking news, but also it's on the conversation of mental health. But one of the organizations here in Halton, Halton Families for Families, recognizes people who are doing great engaging community work, raising awareness about mental health, and helping students to find supports that they need throughout Halton. And we're really pleased that we were recognized, an individual in Halton Catholic was recognized, a secondary school, and an elementary school were recognized by Halton Families for Families. Jean Van Deis Secondary School was recognized for their Disable the Label Conference, which is a student-focused mental health conference. One of our CYCs, Tara Harrod, who is at St. Gregory and St. Mary, was nominated by her community for the work that she's doing supporting mental health awareness and support programs in schools. And St. Francis School in Georgetown was nominated by a parent, by a parent of a student who struggles, by a parent who has significant mental health concerns. And this parent wrote some compelling nomination for the entire school community, led by principal Mark Witter, for the work that they're doing to support mental health awareness and creating mentally healthy schools for all of our students. So as I share the information about our award for branding throughout the community, I also take this opportunity to share some good news stories about schools and individuals in Halton Catholic who are being recognized for promoting positive mental health awareness throughout the community. Happy to take any questions. And thank you to trustees, because we do feel your support when it comes to the work that we're doing to try and support students in positive and mentally healthy ways throughout our community.
Thank you, Superintendent Brown. Any questions? No? Okay, great job. Thank you. And now we have Superintendent Nah, Theological Theme Artist Recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really pleased tonight to introduce to you one of our students who's very talented and gifted, Doreen Yang. If you'd like to come up here. Doreen is a student at St. Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School. And as you know, and you'll see in your package later on, we are launching a new theological theme starting in September of 2017, and the theme is "Do You Love Me?" And so we had a lot of discussions at our committee, and through the help of Terry Durn, our religion consultant, and Liz DeKalke, the art teacher over at Loyola, we went out to the schools to see if somebody could create our image that'll carry us through for the next four years. And Doreen has created, what you can see, I think the prayer cards are in front of you, as well as our zip banner back there, a beautiful image to go with our theme, which has so many different things when you look at this image. The committee was amazed. Every time we looked down at it again, we could see another connection to Scripture. And so Doreen's description of, I put the fuller description in your report, but she has told us that the image portrays a stained-gloss window, and it shows us how to love one's neighbor. The tree symbolizes our Christian community, and the branches turn into hands holding hearts, as we are the hands of God. The symbols within the hearts refer to the different ways in which we serve others, and the cross at the center at the top of the tree, with the hands in prayer beneath it, reminds us to keep our faith strong through prayer. And on either side of the cross, you'll see the symbols for Christ. So I just would like to call upon our chair and our director to make a presentation to Doreen, and really acknowledge the gift that she has in art. And sadly, she's leaving us. She's finishing grade 12, and she's graduating and going on to Rotten School of Business. So artistic, business-minded, I think that's a great combination. But congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you. That really is a beautiful poster. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, trustees, is 6.1, Approval of the Minutes of the May 16th Regular Board Meeting. Can I have a mover, please? Moving. Thank you, trustee Maron, seconded by vice chair Trice. Any questions to the minutes? No? Oh, great. All in favor? Thank you very much. Business arising from previous meetings, 7.1, Summary of Outstanding Items on page 12. Any questions? Just a couple of things? No? Okay. Thank you. No action items, staff reports. 9.1, 2017 to 2018 Draft Budget Estimates, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The draft budget in front of trustees in item 9.1 is a balanced budget with the $54,000 in-year operating surplus. It incorporates $300,000 transfer to the operating reserve, which is in accordance with our budget objectives in maintaining and building an operating reserve for the board, and a $2 million transfer to the capital reserve to be allocated to future school capital projects. The budget also includes, you'll see in the report in Table 1, it includes about 106.2 full-time equivalent additional positions, additional staffing, between elementary and secondary teachers, professional and paraprofessional staff, other school support staff, and system support staff, and the school administration staff. In addition, there's program enhancements outlined in Table 2 that have also been incorporated. And in this version, all the new initiatives in Table 3 have been incorporated, just to give trustees a picture of how the budget would look with the $590,000 in new initiatives incorporated. As it stands, the budget incorporates the salary increases that have been outlined in our collective agreements and are applied for all staff across the board, as well as the benefit adjustments, which are in relation to the transfer to the provincial benefit trust, which require a 4% increase in premiums year over year. The main changes from May 16 includes the reduction in the IT budget for infrastructure for $180,000 to make room to put towards the new initiative for an IT analyst, which has been identified in the new initiatives list. There's $48,000 in additional staffing since the last report, which is 0.5 child and youth counselor, and a 0.3 special equipment amount clerical support, which have been identified as needs since the last version of this budget. $48,000 in additional transportation costs have been estimated for the Holy Family students that are currently attending St. Thomas Aquinas. $590,000 have been added, as I mentioned, for the new initiatives. And we are in compliance with the enveloping, including the bag, which is underspent. There is going to be, in the transportation allocation, we expect to be overspent by $680,000 next year, and that is mostly due to increasing rates for the bus, school bus operators, with no change in the funding formula. There is a technical group that is being put in place by the ministry to look at the transportation calculation for the funding, and hopefully that will, in the future, reduce or alleviate this deficit or gap in funding versus expenses. But it will not be in place for next year. With the additional staffing enhancements that have been identified through collective agreements, and a number of them being assigned to special education resources, we were able to address a lot of the needs throughout the system, and the enveloping for this funding has decreased the gap between funding and expenses to around $800,000 from $1.6 million that we have in the current year. So that is a significant reduction. We just completed the enveloping, and that is different than what we presented at the Special Education Advisory Committee prior to finalizing all the enveloping revenues. All the expenses are mapped first, and then the additional staffing enhancements that have been provided through collective agreements. The funding for that resides outside of special education. So once you take that into account, the deficit is reduced to around $800,000 for next year. The final budget will be presented for trustees' approval at the next board meeting, and we were going to suggest some discussion around how that would look like, and if there's changes suggested by trustees at this board meeting, so that we can incorporate them in the next budget. We are required to submit an approved, board-approved budget by June 30th, and next board meeting is the last meeting. If we don't approve a budget at the next board meeting, we will have to have a special board meeting. So just something to consider. But I would like trustees to have a discussion and get an understanding of what are some of the changes that trustees would like to see reflected in the final budget.
Any questions? I know I have a question, but I'll defer to you first. Any questions, trustees? Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, so in every buzzer presentation up until now, we saw challenges and pressures to the budget, and the new initiatives were not costed. So what changed today?
The new initiatives were not included until this point. However, there was, in the prior budget, there was $942,000 in the in-year operating surplus. Right now, it's $54,000 with the addition of a couple of staffing, transportation, and the new initiatives, and transfer to the operating reserve. So it didn't, the revenue side didn't change. We reviewed the enrollment and are comfortable with the projection that we had in the May 16 budget, so we haven't changed that aspect. We're going to do one more review of enrollment, just in case we feel that there's any need for change based on current registration. So the revenue side has an increase. So, the revenue side has an increase. We've just included those additions, so the changes to the budget have been identified also. I believe it's in Appendix G of the report, has all the changes between the two versions as well. And Page 5 of the report at the top also outlines the main differences between the two. We had a lot of staffing enhancements through collective agreements this year, which have definitely helped to address a lot of priorities through the system, and they came fully funded, which also helped.
Through you, Madam Chair, and if other people could agree, it would be interesting, maybe in time for the next board meeting, that we could have the budget without the new initiatives in it. It's good to see it tonight, but maybe we could have that compare, if anybody else would agree to that.
From, so with respect to not including the initiatives, they would come out of the expenses, so what would happen is the in-year surplus will be increased by $590,000. That is the actual effect of that.
Excuse me if I missed this. Could you tell me, please, which one of those new initiatives is required?
So, in Table 3, on Page 4 of the report, we identified the new initiatives. It is proposed that we conduct a job evaluation review for the non-union group, which is due next year, and this would be an assessment, independent assessment, market evaluation for staff. And the Empower Reading Program is neutral, so that we're actually going to be addressing outside of the budget with any savings we have this year and next year, so that will occur. It's just still listed on this list because we had it originally as a new initiative. The IT server position was a gap that we had in skills in that, in the area, in terms of IT security. And in speaking with the senior administrator of the IT services, he felt that from the increase in his budget for IT infrastructure, he gave away more than enough money to incorporate this position, because this was more of a priority for the department and the needs in the system, and trying to address all the infrastructure upgrades with the remaining budget. So, this being under my area, I would say it's been passed on in the past as well. We've come to a time where, as you saw, Wanna Cry, and other ransomware, and other attacks on many organizations may occur. It is a gap we would like to proactively act upon, and I would strongly recommend trustees consider this addition to our skill pool in that area. And the, so I'm looking at the wellness program, for example, is something that we've offered our staff, and it was offered through services provided by our HR, the benefit consultant. And now that we're moving to a provincial trust, we no longer will have that consultant, and they will no longer fund our wellness program. So, now we're in a position where, are we going to cut our wellness program, or are we going to continue funding it? And that is a decision that is on the table today. The records coordinator, it was a need for a one-year contract in order to help with some of the backlog in getting us up to date as per the requirements for records retention. So, that was a one-year contract. And the Museum of Tolerance educational tour refers to a conference that we were proposing to have a principal representative from each one of our municipalities and the leading superintendent attend, and bring back the learnings in terms of equity and inclusive education, and the framework, and be shared amongst the regions that they represent. So, bringing that back into the system and implementing. The cost of that is expected to be under $25,000. It's not finalized, but it could be significantly under the $25,000 that we're proposing here. They are all important. I am not sure if the director or senior staff would like to speak to them. Definitely, you know, they're listed in order of priority, that senior staff felt that's the order of priority. If there's any items that particularly trustees disagree with, now would probably be the best time to discuss and agree what we would remove, or if there's anything that needs to be added that we may not have considered.
Trustee Michael, and then trustee Intimacy? Okay, I'll take notes. Through you, Madam Chair, to Roxana. Did you say anyone was required? Like, you put them in priority for us, but it is, are they required? Because I'm not sure how we can take them out of the budget to look at if they're required. Pardon me?
I don't think they're required by the Education Act. They're just maybe required by staff.
No, but that's the question Diane asked, so I wanted to know the answer.
They are, if they were not important, they wouldn't be on this list. There's a lot of other items we would have discussed and not made them, not made it on the list. Obviously, the top five or so would probably be the most important to the system, but they're in the priority sequence that if we are going to determine what should not be included, I will start from the bottom up.
Trustee Intimacy, then trustee Danko, then trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. The question on the traveling down to the Museum of Tolerance to gather information, given that our students go on a semi-regular basis, and there's usually teachers, et cetera, that go with them, would we not already have a good portion of this information and have, you know, access to it? I guess I'm missing as to what we wouldn't have here already that would require, you know, several people to go down and get more information, and why California, and they have a place in New York.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is part and parcel, and the question's being asked over and over again, what is required and what isn't required. Equity and inclusivity is a required mandated area that all boards need to address. And part of, and parcel, why beyond what we are currently doing? There is no question that we need, we're doing a great deal already in our system, but we need to move it further in terms of empowering and making changes so that our students are, broaden their perspective on equity and inclusivity. And it's in the news, it's all around us constantly. Why leaders? Well, the Simon Wiesenthal Center focuses on leaders, because they believe that leaders, the principals of the school, are empowered, and they are given the skills to be able to come back, and they are the ones that are going to be implementing and working within their school communities on how to move a broader equity-inclusive education for their school communities. So, they are given the tools and the skills to be able to do that. So, part and parcel, when we started with the cost a few months ago, we didn't have a cost at that point in time. We now do have costs, and as Roxana has indicated, the costs are, have been reduced substantially. The program is a hands-on, so it isn't just philosophy, it's a hands-on. And the expectation from the Simon Wiesenthal Center is that all participants that do attend their conferences, that they will come up with a plan, and that will be our expectation as a board as to how they are going to move equity and inclusivity in their schools, just beyond just theory. How is this going to play out? And in fact, many of our other boards, surrounding boards, have actually students going to this. We're not at that stage. We need to begin with the leaders. But hopefully, with time, as we said, that once we empower and we give the schools, the leaders in the schools, the tools and the skills, that they then will take that and work within their school community to develop leaders within their students, within their staff, and be able to continue the difficult work that we need ahead of us. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. Trustee Danko.
Was it my turn? Am I reading the budget estimates correctly when I see, the treasurer says it's a balanced budget, but does that mean that it's not literally balanced, but that it's within the 3% legal requirement? And am I correct in saying that our operating surplus, the way it stands with the proposal in front of us today, is that we have a negative $53,683 operating surplus?
So, it's more than a compliance budget. So, if we look at, what a compliance budget means, it means a deficit budget. It's a deficit budget that is within compliance, which means it's within 1% of our provincial allocation, and currently that is going to be around $3.4 million for us. So, the provincial allocation refers to the operating revenue, so outside capital. So, we could be in a compliance budget and have a deficit of up to $3.4 million. We really do not want to be anywhere near a compliance budget. The Board of Trustees are mandating staff. You've mandated us to have a balanced budget. A balanced budget is a budget of zero, so no surplus and no deficit. Of course, trying to achieve a little surplus in the budget is more efficient than trying to build an operating reserve, which is the guidelines of the ministry, as well as working on transferring our rental of facilities, revenues in the capital reserve, so that we can put that money back into our schools and supplement our school renewal, has been the goals within the budget, the objective. So, if we're looking at, on the second page of the budget report, the in-year surplus is $54,000. It's a surplus, not a deficit. It's a surplus of $54,000. Then we have, in addition to that, a $300,000 transfer to the operating reserve, and a $2 million transfer to the capital reserve. Then there's committed capital projects, which those relate to an amount, so think about it as a reserve that has been put aside for a particular purpose, and they are coming into revenue, so they're decreasing every year as we depreciate or amortize the assets they relate to. So, they were like a funding source for an amortization expense, it's not a cash expense, so now we need to have a revenue source as we amortize, as we have that expense every year. So, those two items at the bottom, the committed capital projects and the sinking fund interest earned, in time they'll go down to zero. And that is the purpose of them. It's not something, we don't change them. If we use any school renewal, the capital reserve, so if we use the capital reserve, say we use $2 million on the capital project for schools, that $2 million will be reduced from the capital reserve and moved into the committed capital reserve, and then draw down over time as we amortize that particular project. So, the fact that we have reductions there is normal, so what we need to look at overall, we have an internally, a total accumulated surplus of $2 million. The capital portion of it, though, is being moved into the reserve to be spent. So, it's not, there's a plan on how that needs to be spent, and Superintendent Corbachio has already a list of renewal logs that they would like to do, and they would like to do them in more of economies of scale, so volume, to get the best price. So, if we're looking at what's our operating piece, is the $54,000 plus the $300, and that's including everything that we have in. So, everything we've discussed to date, currently, all the salary increases that have been identified, the benefits increases, all the additional staff or growth and enhancements, all the special education initiatives that have been identified, the program enhancements to our non-salary piece, and the new initiatives currently are in, and this is the result.
Thank you. We now have trustee Quinn and trustee Marais.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I wanted to draw your attention, the treasurer's session to Page 33, which is Appendix B2, the budget estimates for fees and contractual expenses. It's on this summary sheet that I see an increase of over $2 million, and I'm wondering if there are cost savings to be found here when I look at $120,000 in insurance increases as well. What would, what would that specific line item, why would we have such a high increase in insurance in a short period of time? And what, other than growth, is leading to $2 million in contract fees in this budget? Because I don't see that in your summary notes.
So, in terms of the insurance, as you're looking through year to year, they typically go up by the same amount. It's our insurance renewal with OSB. It is a, think about it as a consortium that all school boards have, and we have a good rate of insurance with them, so it's something that, this is our portion for that. Every year that we renew insurance is going to be reassessed, and it ends up being what it is. So, that is consistent with prior years, it's just the cost for insurance as we add schools, or the policy changes and is renewed, as claims are being brought forth by not just our board, but across the, all of their school boards that they service, it's an insurance, it gets reassessed, and that's the premium. So, that's that piece.
Is this something that we would put out for tender for insurance, or do we just go with the flow with OSB and presume that it's the best way to go? But seeing these 15% annual increases, that seems, that it may be feeding the machine rather than feeding the needs of the board.
I'm not sure when it would have been last time tendered or not, but this services all the school boards in. I would have to take this question back. I'm not sure what the agreement would be, and what, we are in a consortium, and that provides economies of scale. We are a big enterprise, and we are, we have students and volunteers and staff and many buildings and so forth, so it's a very comprehensive insurance coverage. But I would have to take your question back. I don't have the full answer right now.
So, the total of $2 million, $2,414,945 increase, is that something we can expect to go up year after year in that fashion?
So, most of these increases would be for some of the contractual, so I'm just looking through this. There's additional, if we open schools and we do contract, the custodial services, they will be added here. It includes anything in terms of professional fees, architect, and so forth. So, if, now that we have a new school being opened, you have to use those professional services, they will land in here. So, it will be different from year to year, and as we grow, we expect them to go up. Everything that we have in here, we are aware of that it's coming, and it cannot be necessarily deferred or reduced. So, there's nothing in these line items that could be, we would say would find efficiencies. A lot of it is spoken for, and waste disposals, no removal, things like that would be forecasted in terms of what we expect next year as well.
Trustee Marais?
In your introduction, you talked about employee compensation changes that have been agreed upon, but you insinuated that there is kind of baked in, changes made into this based on, I guess, future, future decisions. based on, I guess, future decisions. Is that understood correctly? Okay. My next, go ahead, please.
So the increases that are for all staff, that includes all union staff, non-union staff, and supervisory officers, are being done so that it matches the GSN. So though I don't necessarily have an artificial surplus in there that I did not take into account. Whether or not certain things may not happen, the executive compensation may be very different, but as of right now, this is what's in the GSN. I'm just matching it so there isn't looking like I have money left over that hasn't been allocated, which may not be the case. So it's being conservative in applying it based on the information we currently have and based on what is in the GSN currently has been allocated to all the staffing groups where there were increases baked into the GSN.
Madam Chair, I mean, every budget presentation since April, May discuss pressures on budget. So have those subsided three weeks later since the last proposal? I mean, there was a list of them on every PowerPoint we saw. So what happened to them? They gone?
So the pressures are there, and a lot of them are out of our control. We, in looking at our salary and benefits budget, we haven't forecasted an increase. So we're hoping that the trends don't increase really. So it's very difficult to forecast some of those. And last year, we did forecast an increase, and there were an early plan in place, for example, potentially other factors. We were fortunate that the absenteeism rate wasn't as high as we had predicted. So we continued that trend from the prior year. There are still pressures in the budget, and as of right now, we've looked at all of our non-salary budgets, and they have only been increased for the bare minimum. There's a lot of other things we would like to do. There's a lot of other items that have been deferred, if they're not included. If we have money at the end of the year, we typically address what we can, and other things get deferred. That is, it's an exercise that we do throughout the year. The pressures are there, and even this year, so when we had those discussions, the additional staffing enhancements weren't clear, they weren't announced, that has helped us tremendously. This year and the next year, we've had the ability to include a number of key staff that we need in the system that we otherwise would have had to, at least in part, include them in the budget, and they would have put us over. So we have, I believe it's around $3 million in staffing enhancements that have been announced, and part of those would have been required, especially the special education resources would have been otherwise added to the budget, and they would have put us in a deficit position. So there are a number of factors that worked in our favor this year, and we're looking at all the trends, and we're hoping this, the additional staffing will be made permanent. Right now, it's a two-year commitment from the ministry. They definitely have been, we have found an efficient use for them to address the needs that, most of them we would have had to include anyway.
Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, so is there a list of things we deferred from this budget already?
Well, every superintendent looked at their budget, and where they could, they reduced their budget. Now Superintendent Corbaccio is not here, but we typically do allocate less than the school operations allocation by deferring certain items and focusing on priorities, and that's what we've done in the past as well. We're also looking at just how many, for example, grades of new textbooks we can afford to purchase, trying to fit some this year if we have room and not, put them on the budget addition for next year and so forth. Those are the kind of decisions we have as we go through in a year.
Okay, Roxanne. Any other questions? No? All right. Yes.
The point was made by the treasurer that we should get all the concerns out now, but I think we can pass a budget next meeting, or we can wait to a further special meeting of the board if that were the case. But we can easily just pass the budget with select amendments to it at the meeting of. We changed the process, by the way, and you've changed it for the better, I think, because you've been listening to concerns and I think in how we could better provide some feedback and also for us to get some feedback from staff, which I think has really worked in the past. But it changes, it changes constantly, and we may need to make changes as of the end of June, and I think we should be prepared to make those amendments at the next meeting as well, to, and be able to work within it at that meeting and pass the budget if need be then.
Thank you. So that's everything on that item. All right, we're moving on to 9.2, the 2017 capital priorities business cases submissions. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees will recall, we submitted five capital priority projects as part of the July 15, 2016 submission. They are outlining the report on figure number one. One of them was awarded funding, which is Milton number eight, for a new elementary school. On January 27, the board also, 2017, the board also submitted four projects as part of the school closures and consolidation capital submission as outlined in figure two. And as of right now, we're still waiting on ministry response on these business cases. However, in anticipation of the memorandum that is due to be released shortly, we hope, in terms of the 2017 capital priorities business case submission, staff have prepared eight business cases, so eight priorities for this round of funding, and they are listed in figure three of the report. Our most dire need in the system by far is the secondary panel in Milton. We are suggesting an addition of 28 to 30 classroom addition to Bishop Reading, so permanent classroom addition. I believe we have in excess of 30 portables onsite and growing. As of September 1, 2018, we would like that addition to be complete. And there's a need for a third secondary school in Milton to be open in September 2020 to alleviate some of the pressures in South Milton. The rest of the priorities are related to prior submissions with the, related to the pupil accommodation reviews, with the exception of St. Peter, the addition of classroom, of childcare space in order to make up for the reduction of the childcare space in Bishop Reading to make room for additional space for the students and move them to St. Peter instead, and make it a five classroom addition, a five classroom childcare space, which would be a higher space, a bigger space for that location. And St. Mark's partial demolition and five classroom addition with the childcare space as well. On the last page of the report, there is a draft resolution for trustees for approval of the June 20 meeting. And should the ministry funding be announced in between, we would change the projects by removing anything that would be approved, and the remaining will be submitted to the ministry for the 2017 capital priorities submission. And Fred and myself would be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Questions? Trustee Quinn and trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. What is the estimated cost of the addition to Bishop Reading? I was not aware personally that we had 30 portables there. That sounds atrocious. If I was a parent in that board, I'd be here complaining every meeting. We're just going through the budget process now. I'd like to know what that would cost, and perhaps we could address it in budgeting and not wait until the government decides it's worth it to them.
Through you, Madam Chair, and this can be confirmed from Ryan again, I'm going from memory here, but 28, usually it's around 250 a classroom. So yeah, about $16 million would be the cost of that addition, as well as other improvements that would be required for the building. So it is a sizable investment. I think we were good to wait a little bit, because initially, we were looking at a much smaller addition, and it seems that our intake from our co-terminus board has increased substantially. So now I think we've got a very good, sustainable number, and we know exactly what size we should be at. And now it's a very high priority on our list. We've had this presented to the Ministry of Education as something that we were looking to implement within the coming years, and they have indicated that, you know, when you have the whites of their eyes onsite and ready to go, it's very indicative of, you know, a good project, that they can guarantee that it'll be a sustainable long-term enrollment. In addition to that also, albeit, yes, it is of concern when you have this many portables onsite. It's been very typical, especially for secondary schools, that we need those portables onsite to very much demonstrate to the Ministry of Education that there is a dire need. Otherwise, especially when it comes to secondary schools, the ministry is not very quick to fund these sorts of projects because of the high level of investment required for them. I'll give you an example, Corpus Christi was one of the latest ones, I know from memory, where, you know, one of the ministry representatives drove by Notre Dame at that time and saw the sea of portables, and soon after that, we were funded for a brand-new secondary school. So I think it'll be a very telling and a very compelling case to get this through if we submit this as our first priority.
Thank you. Trustee Rowe, and then trustee Ian Tomasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm disappointed to see the removal of Georgetown from the list, and I would submit that it should be added to the list. As we just heard, the ministry can be very whimsical about their decisions, and we have, the information that's presented in the report is nothing new. We know that they don't want to fund the school because Georgetown, Holy Cross School is okay by their standards. That's a testimony to Jacomo, Corbaccio and his staff, and how well they keep that school together from that 1958 school together. So that's nothing new. But what is new is that our elementary schools in Georgetown are completely full. That's the point I made to the minister when I spoke to her, and said that that's the real reason. We have no room for new students, you know, a large number of new students. We have a new subdivision coming online in Georgetown in the next couple of years, but even then, the ministry doesn't give you money for a new school until you've got 200 or 300 kids sitting around waiting for a new school. Well, we have no room for 200 or 300 more kids in the elementary schools in Georgetown as it is. And so I don't think we need to change. Nothing's changed in that way, from what I told the minister, and so our support, our requests shouldn't change either. It may be keep moving down the list, but I think we still need to submit a business case for it. And I want to point out that we have had, I have had unwavering support from our member of provincial parliament. Ted Arnott has brought this, has spoken to the minister just recently, again, on our behalf. He has spoken about it on the floor of the House. So they know about it, and they know about it, and I don't think we should surrender by removing it from the list. So I would request that the Georgetown business case be added. It may, nothing may be brand-new about it, but the situation has not changed there. We have a lot of Catholic students that want Catholic education, and we're going to end up with no room at all. And I just don't know what we're going to do. So we still need to keep making the case to the ministry. Thank you.
Thank you. We do mention to the minister every time we see her about Holy Cross. Perhaps the director and staff could look into that. Fred.
Through you, Madam Chair. It was definitely a difficult decision. Right now, we have a slot for eight priorities, and at the time when the report was written, we really had to make the choice as to what we thought were most viable projects that would have the potential to be approved at that point in time. But I do hear trustees Rowe's submission in terms of keeping it on the radar for that, for the Ministry of Education. So again, this list isn't approved as of yet, there's still room for discussion, and Georgetown was definitely one that we anticipated. One of the things that may very well change in the coming weeks is definitely the release of memorandum. We just got the release of, I mean, like within, not so, within the last hour or few, for the new childcare, it seems that we're looking at a different funding pool for childcare now. So we might see some shifting of this that might remove one of these priorities. And again, second to that is also the fact we haven't received any word from the SEC funding approval. So if we're lucky, which would be nice, you know, that would be another event where we could potentially remove one of these priorities, and that would allow for an additional space within the listing. I think right now with St. Peter's, again, I've just given a very cursory review of the memorandum that was just released by the ministry for the early years capital program. Seems that they're going to fund standalone child cares on a separate funding stream now, so that might leave some room to bump things up a bit and move it along. So at that point, it really, it's up to the board trustees to decide how we move forward. But with, if there's any removal of any of these eight priorities, there should be room for an additional one, because afterwards, what's next in line is not an immediate capital priority need, like the new growth areas, we just, they're not needed at this point in time. So I think Georgetown is at that ninth priority level. So if we manage to get one out, whether it's through funding or through the requirements of the new memorandum, which I think St. Peter's might be removed as noted in point two there in the figure, we might be able to bump up and add Georgetown yet again. Which, one other point I would want to maybe clarify is, at this point in time, I think we should maybe resubmit as a strictly new capital priority. Again, underlying the point that we've tried the alternative approach of looking at a consolidation to try to see if a more efficient and more, larger school economies of scale would be the approach that the ministry needed. Seeing that it was not accepted, I would go back to a strictly capital priority replacement school with significant growth needs as the submission formats would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Fred. Question on the BR extension. How does this, or does it impact on the future third high school that we're looking at? Because I understand that's not that far away, so I'm just wondering, is this just going to alleviate things for a short period, and then will we have a boundary view, and will some of these students then go up to a new school once it's completed? Or do you see the numbers staying that high at BR?
Through you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the question, trustee Ian Tomasi. That's a great question. When it comes to BR, however, this is strictly the Milton, the old urban area of Milton. So this includes St. Peter's, Holy Rosary Milton, Our Lady of Victory, and St. Anthony of, how do I keep mixing the two up? Those four is what really constitutes that enrollment. What we've been seeing year over year, and this is where we were a little bit unsure as to, you know, what kind of addition we're looking at, is that we get almost, you know, a sizable number from other boards, other co-terminus boards within Milton, which significantly increases the total of grade nines that come in and carry that forward in grade 12. In addition, we have the AP program, which is another draw. However, this and the third secondary school are completely separate from one another. Opening this won't delay the need for the new Milton number three. So tentatively, and how we're developing the business case in our projections, what we're looking at as is the area east of the creek would be kind of the dividing line for the third. So we would associate four elementary schools, so that being the two existing Guardian Angels and Our Lady of Thaddeus would be directed to the new Catholic secondary school in Boyne East. And then there are two additional Boyne East elementary schools that are planned within that area specifically. Further to that, we also have the Milton expansion lands, which just recently, we had a public meeting that was hosted by the town explaining that the new area of development is coming online to meet those provincial 2036, 2041 enrollments. So that's another pool of enrollment that we're going to be seeing. And for John Vanier, we're going to retain that five elementary school family, which would be Queen of Heaven, Lumen Christi, Benedict's, Milton number eight, which was just recently going to site plan in a few weeks, and then Milton nine, which is in the Walker subdivision, which is just east of Trafalgar. So we're going to have about four, four and five feeder schools feeding into all of these. The AP program's definitely going to help BR sustain those numbers over the long course. We're, perhaps, we'll be looking at other special programming in Milton for We're, perhaps we'll be looking at other special programming in Milton for the second, the third Milton Secondary School. And again, we're going to be supplemented by a significant amount of growth over the coming years with that newer urban expansion area. That's going to be east of James No Park Way and just south of Britannia, east of the creek. So we've, a lot of houses to come. I can guarantee you that.
Thank you. No more questions at all? All right. So thank you Superintendent Nagoy. And now we are on, thank you very much, Mr. Tebow. The Angelus, Director Dawson, Superintendent Brokasson.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this was, this report is to respond to the motion proposed on April 18th that all Halt and Catholic School Board Elementary Students, School Children at or prior to the lunch bell be led by the teachers in the classroom in the recitation of the Angelus each and every school day for the months of May and October. Staff were asked to produce a report on what is currently happening in our schools as well as obtain stakeholder feedback. In your package this evening, you will see the extent of the stakeholder consultation. On May 10th, we sent out an invitation to provide stakeholder input on this motion. An email went to all parents from the chair and an email went to staff from myself and there was email distribution list to a number of our key stakeholders and the deadline was May 30th for a response. The feedback that we gathered was both through the online form and also if we received separate emails or in hard copy to the office of the director or the chair of the board. Through the online form, you will see a table between May 10th and May 30th, a total of 1,275 respondents and 1,018 provided comments. And all of those comments are attached in Appendix A. You will see the number of people who responded by their respondent group with the biggest respondent group being parents of elementary students. The email or hard copy mailed to the office of the director or the chair of the board, we received 73 pieces of correspondence that offered feedback on this motion and they are coded responses below, so we knew that, we asked them to identify themselves. So they are parents, teachers, support staff, administrators, Catholic School Council and so on. So you will see the numbers of support and non-support. Additionally, we, as we worked through all of these responses, we developed some recurring themes. And I believe Andrea's put, we've uploaded that, Rosie or it's at People's Spot. Some of the recurring themes in support, we didn't have a rationale provided. In support, the prayer is important in Catholic schools. People said it was a wonderful way to honor Mary. It was a beautiful prayer. And in support, it was a tradition that needs to be brought back. Some reasons and themes for non-supporting, there was obviously some with no rationale that schools should focus on education and curriculum. Trustees should not be mandating prayer, be devotional, not dictated. Prayer already happening, other ways to honor Mary. There was a theme about timelines, not often too specific or too rigid. That prayer is not age-appropriate, not relevant today, it's too long and teachers already pressed for time and not a good use of teacher time. So there is a table with all of those themes and a breakout of how many people and respondents for that. So in terms of staff commentary, in 2012, the, under, for Catholic education, the Catholic bishops released the Ontario English Catholic Elementary Curriculum Policy Document for grades one to eight for religious education. And in that document, there are various strands under believing, celebrating, living a moral life, praying, living in community and living in solidarity. And the main focus of this curriculum is that there is a clear and unequivocal proclamation of the person of Jesus and that in the preaching of his name, his teaching, his life, his promises and the kingdom which he gained for us by his apostle ministry. Students learn specific expectations about Mary at each grade level, building on a foundational of knowledge and understanding that is developmentally appropriate within this curriculum. Under, there's a list on page 49 of your package of the theological concepts regarding Mary within this curriculum document. There's 11 points there. And also under, in Appendix C, you will find all the specific curriculum expectations that are related to Mary. Also in the curriculum, students explore scripture stories every year and they are pertaining to Mary, the Annunciation, the Visitation, Birth Narratives, the Visit of the Magi, Presentation at the Temple, the Wedding at Cana, the Passion and Death of Jesus, the Resurrection and Ascension narratives and Pentecost. In addition, this curriculum also helps provide authentic opportunities to participate in Marian devotions with fidelity through prayer, liturgy and song such as Hail Mary, the Rosary, the Magnificat, the Thea, the Chaplet of Divine Mercy and the Angelus. There are various litnes, feast days throughout the year, a variety of songs honoring Mary and honoring Marian months of May and October. You will see also on page 51 of your document that there are activities that are inspired in our schools such as praying the Rosary, having a Marian Mass, praying of Hail Mary in different languages over the announcements. There's some involvement for our Rosary Apostolate in our schools, some every month, some throughout the year and some Marian celebrations. So we wanted to assure trustees that our students receive extensive faithful, relevant and ongoing catechesis on Mary. And it also assures that our students have many opportunities to engage in inspired spiritual and celebratory devotions of Mary. Some of the quotes from the catechism of the Catholic Church are in your package, that Marian prayer and practices are a form of popular devotion through which Catholics express their pious feelings and popular piety or devotions is subject to the care and judgment of the bishops and the general norms of the church. Also, the meaning of prayer and how it leads us to Jesus must be conveyed to the learner. Students need to internalize prayer and have it spring from their heart. And the concept that prayer comes from the heart through the prompting of the Holy Spirit in response to the call of God must be the central concept of children learning prayer. Prayer cannot be reduced to ritual words and postures and mandating one form of prayer runs the risk of limiting the essence and purpose of prayer. In conclusion, we are saying that the Angelus is a lovely prayer. However, if it was encouraged or an invitational approach without mandating, as that would be operation in all in nature would be a suggestion. And we would continue to provide relevant catechesis and appropriate opportunities for students to respond to foster spiritual development. And I'd be happy to take any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the staff who prepared this and we are extremely grateful to all stakeholders who participated, took the time to send in the survey, the different activities, the different ways in which they responded. It's truly very much appreciated. So are there any questions? Trustee Danko.
Chair Rabenda, on page nine of 80 in the report, there's a comment that is not supportive and it looks like it was submitted online and that somebody typed the statement and then put a brick on the enter key or something and it got repeated about 100 times. So it looks 100 to me. So did, is that counted 30 times or is that one?
Mrs. Swenden?
Yeah, that was caught immediately and that's why it's grouped together. They weren't, it didn't appear in that order. They didn't consecutively do it. So whether it was 30 people that just all used the same statement or whether it was, because what we didn't do is filter out for addresses. We never do that, just in case. You know, in staff rooms, often there's only one computer, so we wouldn't do that. But we, when it is a comment that is clearly the same comment, it's been cut in pace, it's only counted once. So it was not counted 30 times.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you very much to all the staff that worked so hard because it is a very comprehensive survey and we appreciate our stakeholders who responded so quickly and helped us out in this matter. The Angelus will go to action at the next board meeting, which will be the 20th. Thank you very much. And now I see that Mr. Merrick is in position for 9.4 Milton number eight. Thank you.
So through you, Madam Chair. Submitted for your review, we have the sketch plan, design and preliminary budget for the new Milton number eight Catholic Elementary School. So back in November of 2016, the project was approved by the ministry for a $13.67 million in funding, which would be for a 671 pupil place Catholic Elementary School, which is in South Milton on a 6.94 acre site, which is just south of Jean Vanier. We are proposing a modified repeat design, which would be based on the St. Gregory, the Great School, which I know a number of you were there today and saw the great design of that, which was previously based on the, on the St. Benedict design in Milton. And we are proposing right now at a 72,000 square foot design. This would be our largest elementary school to date. However, it's similar in footprint and I'll get into that a little bit more and explain the details as we get further into the, into the floor plans. But you can see a rendering there of the front of the school, some very prominent Catholic features in the front. There's another cross, you can't really see, it's over in this area over here. It's a little masked by the shading, but, and then another, an artist's sketch of the, what would be the inside atrium as you, as you entered through the main entrance to the school. Looking at the first floor plan, we tried to incorporate a number of comments and feedback from various staff across the board to improve on our previous designs and make this another great design for our staff and students. The primary difference being with this, with this design is the side main entrance. So if you'll, if you can see my cursor on there, kind of the side entrance, which would be up in northeast of this building, so the north is towards the top of the page. Comment we received from St. Gregory is that since there is no bus loop in the front and there's no parking in the front of the school, having a main entrance at the front of the building is not necessary anymore. So we relocated the main entrance of this, on this design to the side of the building, which would be close to the, to the main parking area and the bus loop. To accommodate that, we had to adjust the admin block and the, and the library, learning commons block. So the admin block now moves to the northeast corner of the building and the learning commons moves over one spot to the left, towards the center of the building. We also moved the staff room, moves towards the back of the building, down here to kind of the bottom right-hand corner. Staff room moves towards the back again based on, on staff feedback and the receiving room also moved back there as well. The rest of the design is very similar to St. Gregory the Great, which I know many of you toured today. So a very, it's a gym-centric design, so the gym and stage in the center of the building. Kindergarten classes on the west, so they get afternoon sun. And we also have the newly designed special education suite, kind of right to the left as you come in the main entrance up here. We have the special education suite similar to what we saw at St. Gregory today. Moving to the second floor, the primary change on the second floor is the addition of a large mezzanine up here in the learning commons. So this school is larger, it's the largest, would be the largest elementary school we've ever built. It's roughly 1,500 square foot, feet larger than St. Gregory the Great and about 1,300 of those square feet come in that mezzanine in the learning commons. So an area that can be used as a resource or breakout space to kind of branch out within the learning commons onto the second floor. However, we added that extra square footage without increasing kind of the total envelope of the building because we're adding an extra, extra second story space within the existing footprint of the building. We also added an additional resource room, so the school has more resource rooms than St. Benedict or St. Gregory and we tried to pack in as much storage as we could in every nook and cranny throughout the building to accommodate all the supplies for staff and students as well. Also, you probably noticed the great natural light that we have at St. Gregory the Great. We tried to keep many of those features throughout this building as well. So at the front of the building, we have a, you know, a large glazed wall to the learning commons, which will let light, again, we have a glazed wall onto this front hallway here as well. So we let light into that front hallway. On the opposite side of the hallway, we have another kind of a light well to let light down into the, into the main atrium below and the main foyer below. Just off the entrance here to the northeast, we have another vaulted section to let light into that second story, into the second story corridors through the front vestibule. And then as well, you probably saw at St. Gregory today, we had, to the east and west, there's a clear story in the gym to let natural light into the gym. This school, we do a little bit different, do the south wall instead, so across the south wall, the gym, which would be the one closest to the bottom of your page, a clear story there to let natural light into the gymnasium. I think that's, those are the primary changes on the second floor. And then moving to the site plan, a little tougher to see, it's a little smaller, but the primary design features here, so no bus loop in the front. Based on feedback from the town, they want a prominent building presence on the street. So we pushed the building as close as we can within the allowable setbacks to the road to get a strong building presence at the front of the school. The main parking, we relocated to the east, so where you see the buses located on the right-hand side, kind of main staff parking and a bus loop similar to St. Gregory the Great on the, on the right-hand side of your drawing there. And then drop-off on the, on the left-hand side, kind of a pull-through drop-off at the back for, for school students and then for FDK students, kind of a closer drop-off to the, to the FDK play area, which is located to the west of the school on the left-hand side of your picture there, so in this area over here. And then to the south, we have a community park. So this part you see there in green is our property, so we have a mini soccer field placed on the property, just to show for size. But then just to the south where it's not shaded anymore, that's the community park. So we've designed some pathways to connect to the neighborhood to the west and then to connect to the south of the park as well. We're working with the town to find some innovative ways to maybe do some parking loop and drop-off at that park so we can have parents drop-off in the morning and pick-up in the afternoon through the park to alleviate some traffic problems on our site, on our site. We know we have issues with and as we, as the schools reach capacity. As far as schedule, we're looking at site plan submission in the next few weeks, which allows us to tender the project in July, to have us get in the ground and starting on site works for August, which would put us on schedule for completion in July 2018 to set us up to open the school in September of 2018. Of course contingent on municipal and ministry approvals, but we're very experienced in working with the town of Milton, which is a good building of school very, very frequently. So hopefully we can get those on track for a July 2018 completion. So you have three recommendations you have in front of you for consideration. The first is to approve the borrowing bylaw for the construction amount. The second is to approve the preliminary budget for the project and the third is to authorize staff to proceed with the construction of the new Milton number eight Catholic Elementary School. So I'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? Trustees? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. Following on my visits to St. Gregory of late, the beautiful learning commons, library, big glass wall feature at that school is literally two yards from public space on the sidewalk. And the houses across the street are literally 22 yards or something like that away from. So how do we balance the ask of the town to have something close with the privacy of the students and the distractions that come from being almost in the middle of the road with using all that beautiful space and moving them back into a more pastoral setting and having that view, looking at, looking at trees or, or this field, for example, rather than cars going by and people being able to peer in from the houses right across the street?
So we are, we do have drapery coming for St. Gregory the Great as well. If you've been to St. Benedict's in Milton, you have a lot of, you know, sunscreens and drapery in the front to allow light to come in still, but also to kind of provide privacy where necessary. where necessary.
Are we required to put it right on the sidewalk, or do we have the autonomy to do that?
It also maximizes our, our field area in the back, or play area in the back. Where it really becomes an issue is the number of road cuts or curb cuts that we do onto the street. So a bus loop adds as many. As you can see on this site plan here, we are very close to a roundabout up here to the northeast. So municipal bylaws limit how many curb cuts we can do with adding a bus loop in the front there. So it, we aren't left with a lot of options as far as site plan on this site. And it's the same situation we're at at Saint Gregory's, where urban design really encouraged us. If we wanted expedite site plan approval, we need to push that as close as we can to the road. So we look for other solutions like drapery to provide privacy for the students and staff in the building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Murray?
Yeah, are there going to be, are there concerns that you're including the bus loop in one of the parking lots? Are there more concerns about how it's gonna, we have issues in, in South Oakville, or we've had some of the parking lots that, some of the parking lots that the congestion going on, not having this separate bus loop, do you think it will cause more congestion? Do you think that it's going to cause more congestion?
It definitely does cause some issues. We, we do provide enough turning radius there for the buses, and it is a very short timeframe, but the buses are actually there. And we try and incorporate staff parking in that lot as well. So usually, the buses are gone, and then staff leave a little bit after. It, we, we do recognize that it does cause some issues, but especially with these schools, I expect as the numbers of the school, it becomes a holding school for South Milton, the numbers will skyrocket pretty quickly, and there'll be a lot of buses on site. And then as the next new school opens up, either to the east or west, the number of buses will drastically reduce, and, and it'll become a primarily walking school.
And just a point about the, getting rid of the, the front, front main entrance. If you have the visitor parking lot on the other side, don't, don't the visitor, visitors of the school, like if staff is in that bus loop area, don't visitors have to walk up further, further around the building, or is that just, we're, we're taking that, the good with the bad?
It's our, it's our hope that we use the, the, I guess, the eastern lot primarily for visitors and for staff, and the, the west lot becomes primarily for drop off. It could be their stu, or parents parking there temporarily to bring their kids into the FDK area, or drop them, let them out into the, into the yard. But yeah, it is, it is a, you know, we love to have extra parking all around the site, but we are limited in how much we can put on the site and still maximize, or leave the most area possible for the students to play as well.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right. So thank you very much, Ryan, for you and the department, Jacom and the department. And we will look into a groundbreaking celebration, maybe early September, not before, mm? Or June? Soon, I think.
Of course, after June twentieth, that's revocating it. But we'd like to be in the ground starting in, in August. But we're primarily bringing in gravel and doing earthworks. So a groundbreaking in early September, there'll be minimal site works onsite at that point. So that'd be a good time to have it. There's not many days after June twentieth and before the start of the summer. It's a...
Nine, nine point five requests for out-of-Canada travel. Superintendent Finelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this report is to share information about requesting attendance for a senior staff member to attend the upcoming ISIF Berlin workshop and the trade mission being held in Prague, Czech Republic, and Kiev, Ukraine, which has been approved and we have submitted through CAPSIE, the Canadian Association of Public Schools. In the report, you will find further information in terms of the specifics. But one of the highlights that I do want to share with board trustees, that as part of our international education strategy, it continues to be our goal in the upcoming year to recruit students from around the world, with an emphasis and trying to avoid one single region. And we need to continue to actively pursue this. Obviously, trying to break into the European market is going to require resources, and it's going to require energy. And part of that is the request to be able to attend these critical areas for us in the upcoming year. The ISIF Berlin workshop is one of the largest comprehensive fairs in globally, and it is attended by all kinds of agents across the globe. And our goal is to be in the European market, which will give us a very easy way of recruiting and cost-effective, rather than traveling to different countries. The interesting one that we were selected as a board is the CAPSIE Trade Mission to Prague and Kiev for February, because this is a superb opportunity to develop and establish business partnerships with many of the agencies. I must say that it was wonderful when I went, the last board report that I brought forward, I had an opportunity to, in fact, meet with the Canadian Embassy representative in Vancouver from these two destinations, and they were excited that our board will be able to hopefully be there on the ground to start working in that market sector, because this is a new market sector, and it has a lot of potential for us to be able to recruit students. So, moving forward, as again, the recommendation will be presented at the June twentieth board meeting, asking for permission to have one senior staff member to attend these two critical conferences and trade missions. And again, as always, it's my pleasure and privilege to represent Halton Catholic as a, one of the outstanding Catholic boards in the globe, and it's always wonderful to be part of that. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Finelli. Any questions? No? All right. So that will come to us at the next board meeting for action. Thank you. We're now moving into information items. Ten point one, student trustees update. Christina? Trustee Christina?
Okay, so we recently attended the Ontario Student Trustee Association Annual General Meeting. Anna Maria came with us, which was great for her to come out and meet everyone. We had an opportunity to collaborate with fellow boards in the province and kind of see what other student trustees are doing in terms of initiatives, and what they feel are concerns in their schools that they represent as well. We had the opportunity to have an open discussion with the Honorable Minister of Education, Mitzi Hunter, as well, which was a really unique opportunity. And we loved speaking with her, addressing some concerns that we had. She was really open with us, and she took a lot of time to kind of sit with us and explain what's happening at the ministry as well. We also attended Lobby Day at Queen's Park, organized by Oxta, so it was Manuela, Anna Maria, and I. Unfortunately, Ingrid couldn't make it. But that was also a very unique opportunity to sit with fellow student trustees, Catholic student trustees, and discuss the importance of our Catholic education, and how lucky and fortunate we are to have it here in Ontario. Today, we had our Student Senate Leadership Retreat at Canterbury Hills Camp with our Student Senate for the next year. And we had icebreaker games, and it was a really good team-building leadership enhancement for our Senate of next year. On behalf of all of the student trustees, we would like to wish all of our secondary students good luck on their culminations that they are quickly approaching now, and good luck on their exams that will be at the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Ingrid, you have anything to add?
Uh, just going off of what Christina said, because I think she did a fabulous job in her, in her review of kind of what we've been doing in the last month. We're really excited. We've never had the opportunity before to kind of have a leadership day with our com, with our new Senate members before the year has even started. And it was really great to kind of have this head start for next year, where we've already kind of bonded, and we've gotten to know each other. And we have a great group of individuals that we're going to be working with next year. So we're very excited for the new year and of all the great things to come. And I'm very excited to be working with such great student trustees and staff. So it's going to be a good year.
Thank you. No questions? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Could you tell me a little bit more about the Lobby Day? Was there, were there students from other boards as well? And what was the topic on which you were lobbying?
Okay, um, so there was other, so each board kind of attended. It depended, obviously, it was in Queen's Park, and a lot of the boards of Ontario couldn't really send their student trustees. So our AGM for Oxta was that weekend, so some stayed and were able to make it. There was a lot of student trustees that turned out. I think it was about ten. So we were lobbying the importance of Catholic education while we were there. And we had the opportunity as trustees to sit with some of the members there and speak about what, how to move forward advocating as students and leaders in our position, and how to enhance this moving forward. How do we reach our youth? We are the ones that have the ties to our youth, and we have the ability to advocate our education and show the importance of our education moving forward. And so we had really deep discussions as to what things we can bring forward to the table, steps of how to bring that forward. I know that other members of perhaps Oxta sat with and had discussions and meetings of what they wanted to bring forward as well. So I thought it was an amazing experience to sit and see the members at Queen Park, what their day looks like, and to see just how we as, not only our board, but all the boards in Ontario can come together and see Catholic education as something so valuable to spend a whole day on and bring everyone together in one place.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Now we are on ten point two, School Educational Field Trips. Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. Four secondary field trips are before trustees. All relate to Oxta Provincial Championships of our schools, so certainly a success story of our athletics in our schools. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Overholt? Seeing none. Thank you very much. At ten point three, Provincial Consolidation of School Board Financial Statements, Countess' Report with respect to the seven-month period from September the first, two thousand and sixteen to March thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. You have long titles. Superintendent Nagoy?
Um, I tried to make it longer, but I couldn't. Really, all this is saying is that this is the provincial consolidation report. It's for the province. All the ministries have to have a different year-end than the boards, and it includes hospitals, colleges, universities, and so forth. We have to provide the actual revenues and expenses for the seven-month period, and they also use the five-month period for our prior year-end in order for them to come up with their year-end, which is April first to March thirty-first. So it's just a different provincial year-end, and we have to give them the revenues and expenses, so they can consolidate them provincially. The March report, or the seven-month report, as it's also called, is a mini year-end in the middle of the budget season. So we're excited that it has been finalized, submitted. The auditors, the external auditors have completed their work, and their report is attached in Appendix A, and it is noting no exceptions found. We have submitted the EFS forms, the Education Information System forms, to the ministry on May nineteenth, as per the required deadline. And some of the schedules, which outline revenues, expenses, and the capital assets, are also attached in Appendix B and C. Erin, Jay, and myself would be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees? No? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy, and your staff. Long-term, at ten point four, Long-Term Accommodation Plan, LTAP. Superintendent Nagoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The ministry requests that boards submit at least every five years a long-term accommodation plan. The last approved plan was a two thousand and thirteen plan, approved in principle by the board at the June eighteen, two thousand and thirteen meeting. And this report outlines the start of the new long-term accommodation plan development. The proposed milestones are suggested in the report, and staff will provide regular updates with the, within the development by providing board reports throughout the next year. We do anticipate that a board approval will be in the first or second meeting in June of two thousand and eighteen. So this is just the initiation of this new phase, looking at what our accommodation pressures are, whether it's growth, whether it's declining enrollment. And Fred and myself would be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you. As to ten point five, Halton Student Transportation Services Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review, Superintendent Nagoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So attached is the Halton Student Transportation Services Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review Report for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year, and is attached in Appendix A of the report. You would know that for the September two thousand and seventeenth of the next, the school year, there are two exemptions, areas that are noted, for Saint Anthony of Padua for Milton, and Christ the King Secondary School for Halton Hills. There is also in section three of the report, it addresses the transportation policy exemptions by municipality, which will remain in effect for next school year. And at this time, there's no anticipated additional policy exemptions to be introduced for the next school year, but we'll keep reviewing any new residential developments that may, may come into place. And Fred and myself would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Any questions from trustees? Trustee Danko?
Chair Abenda, is this the, is this considered the annual report of the HSTS, or is there an annual report done in August or something?
We have a bigger report. Go ahead. I don't have it with me.
Yes, we, we've had their annual report for the prior year. I have to check the date, so February, I think Fred was mentioning. This is just their transportation review, annual report.
We got a report. All right. So any other questions? No? Okay. With regard to HSTS, we received, this is an addition, we received a letter, an email, from Karen, and they are going to be looking at a survey, a study, to talk about efficiencies between both boards. How can we become more efficient? We're already very efficient, and we work very well together as boards, but they're always looking for more efficiencies. So Fred has been developing a survey, which will be going out in a few weeks' time, I guess, and we will get feedback from trustees. And we're also going to ask the principals, associations, the executive, the, sorry, the executives of both elementary and secondary to give their input to. It's something like, what's the earliest you'd want an elementary school to start? What's the latest you would want an elementary school to end? And the same with secondary, that kind of questions. And they're going to feed these questions back into HSTS, so that they can do this efficiency study. That's all it is. It's nothing for September. It's an efficiency study that they will do in the coming year and see how we can become more efficient. Fred, did you want to add to that? Probably September. Yeah, we'll do it in September. Okay. So, yes, we'll do that once we get the feedback to give to Karen.
Madam Chair, Chair Abenda, I'm also, I'm not only concerned with the efficiency, but I'm also concerned with safety. You know, as you know, in some of the older parts of Halton, South Burlington, and some of the older neighborhoods, there are very extensive renovations, reconstructions, and rebuilds taking place. And oftentimes, in the morning, the contractor vehicles and construction people, tradespeople, are jostling with students walking to school. people are jostling with students walking to school bus stops, and it's only a matter of time before, uh, an injury is gonna take place, and I have a question to, uh, my town, my local town councillor right now to see which bylaws are already on the books for the town of Oakville, um, that, uh, put any kind of, uh, restriction or requirement or prescription on contractors when they obtain building permits and come into a neighborhood, uh, whether or not they have to check with Halton Student Transportation Services in order to determine if there is a bus stop in front of that home or another home, because, uh, informal observations in my own neighborhood, uh, there, there are, it's not safe, uh, it's not safe when students are walking to a bus stop and you have an eighteen wheeled tractor trailer pulling up a load of grass or shingles, uh, right beside them and the bus has to drive around them, so, um, uh, I have, like I said, I had a question in front of my town councillor to see if there's any existing bylaws that are not being enforced, uh, so I'll be bringing this up with the Halton Student Transportation.
Uh, thank you, and we would like to know, uh, what your representatives are saying about that, and maybe, uh, Fred, we could look into that a little bit with HSTS? Okay, that's very important, thank you. Alright, so our next item is ten point six, new theological theme for two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty one, Superintendent Na.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, um, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation to the students who had done the artwork, we are launching a new theological theme in September for this year, um, you may recall, and I put a bit of history in the report for you, that we first launched a theological theme back in two thousand and seven, and, uh, so this is, uh, is our newest theme, and it will be a four year, uh, implementation cycle, um, the theme is Do You Love Me, and the context for this passage taken out of scripture, it's taken from John, uh, is that it's after the third time, it's the third time that Jesus was with the disciples after he was raised from the dead, and with this simple question, Jesus is encouraging us to give from ourself to others for him, this focus on faith theme will allow us the opportunity to shift our attention back to the cornerstone when Jesus asks, do you love me, just as with Peter, our only response is if we are believers, yes, we love him. In that context, Jesus didn't ask Peter why he denied him or where he was when he needed him, he simply asked the question in a way that freed both Peter and Jesus from staying in the past and allowed them to move forward together, reunited and rejuvenated in love and passion to go and serve, and, uh, the scripture goes on to talk about, feed my feet, feed my sheep, tend my lambs, feed my sheep. If, uh, this scripture, uh, this theme is based in scripture, it's also informed by the catechism of the Catholic Church and documents that are inspired by John, uh, it has been developed collaboratively through consultation with our local clergy and the laity, and, uh, using the talents of our staff and chaplaincy team, and I have to give, uh, credit to Jillian Federico, our system chaplain, she couldn't be here this evening, uh, but she was the leader of, of the committee that, uh, took a look at, uh, what our new theme should be. Uh, we plan to bring this theme through life into our system through prayer and worship, through music and art, research, contemplation, journaling, it will be expressed through action with social justice activities and connections laid out for our staff and students, and resources will be developed to support the various associated scriptural passages that flow from that particular piece of scripture. Uh, the theme will be delivered through boardwide events such as faith days, lecture series for individual use, uh, adult faith retreats, study sessions for staff and appropriate levels for students, uh, weekly scriptures prepared by, uh, focal focuses on scriptures prepared by the chaplaincy team, uh, social outreach, various prayer types and prayer services, it will be integrated into the system in the following ways, uh, the board prayer, and you have a copy of it at your seat, uh, that was developed by, um, Father Martin Valelli, who's the pastor at Holy Rosary Burlington, you'll recall, he, uh, said, I think it might have been our opening mass or an earlier mass this year, uh, before one of our board meetings, uh, so he wrote the prayer and did it in the same style as our previous prayers, so that there's some familiarity for the system, uh, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, we had, uh, Doreen Zhang, uh, create the image, uh, to go with it, the theme will be introduced to staff in the district wide faith day that takes place on October the sixth, uh, and then during that week following the faith day, each, uh, school site will participate in a prayer service to remove the current theological theme, uh, banners and replace them with the new theme banners and introduce the, the new theme. Uh, our high school chaplaincy team leaders and local parish staff will offer reflections based on the theme to incorporate into the seasons of the church year, and it will be presented at the next deanery meeting, which is taking place in September, uh, following the launch of it on our faith day, we will send a parent brochure home, uh, and, and brochures out to, uh, the parishes so that they can share, uh, what our theme is, uh, moving forward for the next four years, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sounds wonderful, any questions? No, okay, thank you very much. Uh, ten point seven, these are the notices of motion that, uh, we're now into, employee compensation, that was trustee Marai.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, it's my pleasure to bring this notice, uh, forward today, the notice is whereas employee salaries represent the vast majority of the Halton Catholic District School Board budget, whereas trustees are stewards of taxpayer dollars, be it resolved that public consultation occur before any employee group compensation increases occur as allowed under the Education Act.
Make sure that, um, Rosie gets that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, next one is ten point eight, robotics funding, oh, that's also you trustee Marai.
It is, it is, this is a follow-up actually from a wonderful presentation the board got and some feedback we, uh, we, we got from them, uh, whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board is committing to ex- uh, expanding options for students in STEM fields, whereas Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary has demonstrated the tremendous success of their extracurricular robotics program, whereas this robotics program encourages students to graduate into high value educational streams, whereas the total cost of building the robots and the cost of competition is in excess of fifteen thousand dollars per year per school or per team, whereas the minimum cost for registration at regional robotics competitions is seventy-five hundred dollars per team, whereas students and staff can only spend a portion of time fundraising for extracurricular activities, be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board funds seventy-five hundred dollars per Halton Catholic District School Board Secondary School annually to those secondary schools that apply.
Thank you. Uh, sure, if you've got a question, sure.
Through you, Madam Chair, could we, Paul, address that in the budget session rather than doing it, uh, through a resolution?
I, I'm open to that, I, quite frankly, I just wanted to make sure that I had the rationale, uh, behind it for the board, so if you're, if you're okay with it, I would prefer to keep it on, but if you, if we get to it at next meeting and we want to just push it in, uh, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that as well, to be, to be fair, this isn't just about the budget, this is about following up on that presentation we had from them, so.
It's a good cause, and one that we should certainly consider, but there are many other good causes too, in terms of extracurricular activities and where they go, um, so, yes, it should be discussed, and we should also keep in mind the other wonderful initiatives that go along with that, so, thank you trustee Marai, so, uh, ten point nine, the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget without new initiatives, vice chair trites.
Thank you through me, you, Madam Chair, I'll just make it quick, I'm sure we'll have these, uh, good budget talks on June twentieth, but be it resolved that, the board of trustees approve the proposed twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget without the aforementioned new initiatives, and that staff propose those in a future budget cycle when financial pressures subside, and Rosie, I'll make sure you get the full, with the title, thank you, Madam.
Thank you, yes, trustee Quinn.
And for clarification, Roxana, you said that was about five hundred and thirty thousand dol- three, five hundred thousand dollars?
Five hundred and ninety thousand in total, with about three hundred being a one-time, uh, costs.
Alright, so, uh, correspondence, we have a letter from Chair Cotton of York Catholic District School Board, we have a letter from Monsignor, uh, Murray Korch of, uh, Diocese of Hamilton, we have a letter from the Catholic Principals Association, uh, we have an open question period, but I don't know, we don't have any open questions, we do not have to go back in camera, I need a resolution to excuse Helena and Manuela, trustee Danko, seconded by trustee Quinn, you have a, okay, can I?
I have a question about the cor- correspondence.
Okay, I'll come back to you in a minute, okay, so with the resolution, um, are you making the motion also on that, and trustee Quinn, seconded, all in favor of excusing those trustees, thank you, uh, thank you, and you have a question regarding to the correspondence, trustee Danko?
Uh, Chair Rubenda, the letter from the Principals Council is not signed, so is it an anonymous letter, or, um, who's it from?
Um, it's there, it's from all of the elementary principals, and, uh, the president or the chair of that group is, uh, Liz McIntyre, so, um, she or her team put it together, but it's on behalf of the entire elementary executive.
Okay, uh, so we need an adjournment, and, um, I would also ask that you remember in your closing press, uh, June Seaman, who is, uh, who was a trustee, uh, with his Oxford, Branford, uh, School Board, who has recently passed, a difficult time for her family, uh, so can I get a mover please to close, trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Michael, all in favor, thank you very much, and vice chair trites, you are going to pray for us.
Well, we'll close with a nice Hail Mary, name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus, holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death, amen, Our Lady of Fatima, pray for us.
Thank you very much, and have a safe drive home.